The Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located in the north wall of the Legislative Chamber. And also note that an automatic external defibrillator is also available on the back wall of the Chamber. Please stand for the pledge. We'll commence our meeting of the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items A and B. A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. And B being the call for a meeting set Tuesday, March 26th, 2024, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Do we have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers. Second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we have Resolution C through D, which can also include adjournment. Do I have a second motion? Second by Ro- or excuse me, motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Will now commence the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam or Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business is item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. Do I have a motion and second? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now go into the report from the Director of Corrections being represented today by Amber.
Good morning. Mike sends his apologies for being unable to attend this morning. He was double booked and is attending another meeting that couldn't be rescheduled. I'm here to provide a brief summary of the Board of Corrections report for the month of February. After eight months-
Amber, you identify yourself.
Excuse me, Amber Redman, Deputy Director of Corrections. Thanks, Dan. After eight months of the fiscal year, we do continue to remain under budget. We did see a slight increase of our overtime spent last month, but it's still kind of remaining in that same range. Regarding community corrections and reentry services, some of- we did notice here that some of the numbers for the CJC and reentry services were down just slightly. This is something that we'll continue to keep an eye on with the recent retirement of Mr. Rupe Piper. He manages a lot of the screening and processes for some of those services. So with that position, currently seeking new applicants, we'll continue to keep an eye on that. In regards to the pretrial services, there were worth noting 147 individuals that were supervised on GPS monitors, saving a total of 3,166 jail bed days at $120 a day that theoretically saves Douglas County $379,920 in detention costs. Jumping to enclosure four personnel. Mike has previously explained to you that we are conducting new hire classes quarterly now. We did just graduate our first academy class of 2024. They graduated on February 16th. That was a class of 30 new hires. We, as we ended the month of February, we continue to remain fully staffed. Actually, we were just above our authorized staffing number. We are previously looking to fill our next academy class, which is scheduled for April. Trying to, it's normal for us to see an attrition in those new hire staff numbers, so as those begin to decline, we'll stay on top of the hiring so that we can remain 100% staffed or just slightly above. We did have a couple of retirements in the month of February. I mentioned Mr. Rupe Piper retired, and we also extend congratulations to Sergeant Johnny Deasis, who retired after 22 years of service. And then four officers were promoted from CO1 to CO2. Jumping to enclosure five on the inmate population, there was a significant increase in the number of admissions during the month of February, coming in at 1,345. That was up about 173 inmates from the previous month. It was 1,172 last month, but our releases correlated with that. Those were also up. So you'll see that our average daily population actually decreased by six. I did make a slight correction on the high count and low count there. It appears those kind of copy and pasted from the month before. Our high count was actually 1,081, and our low count during the month of February was 1,010. We provided a summary there on the average length of stay data for inmates released in February. This is a new report that we've been working with dot com to establish. That report has been finalized, and we recalculated our average length of stay. It calculated at 28.7 days. Again, we're looking at the number, the inmate population that was released during the month of February, so evaluating that particular group of people is where we determined the average length of stay was 28.7 days. Over half of our inmates, at 51.45%, were released within 72 hours of being booked. The next step of this process is to actually automate a report to calculate an analysis for those offenders with significant mental health issues. We've been doing that manually, and that data so far suggests that their average length of stay is twice as long. But again, we'll work with dot com to get that process automated. We did see a decrease again in our US Marshal population. We continue to have conversations with them. We do have a contract with them, as you know, and that count continues to decrease. Apparently, the count is down nationwide for the Marshals, so we'll continue to have that conversation with them for available beds in our facility, but that count is trending down nationwide. Looks like business as usual under enclosure six for medical. Jumping to enclosure seven, under the mental health section, worth noting is 49% of our population was diagnosed with a mental illness. That is our all-time high. Moving on to enclosure eight, business as usual. Enclosure nine, staff development. Our applications for new hires remain strong. We received over 100 applications, excuse me, right at 100 applications were received for new officers during the month of February. The executive leadership team did attend a week-long training with NIC. We partnered with Sarpy County. Both executive staff teams were present at our facility with a group of NIC members participating in strategic inmate management. This is going to be kind of an ongoing training over the course of about a year to fully train all of our staff members in order to incorporate that program into our facility. Unfortunately, NIC was forced to postpone a visit to train our staff on the trauma-informed care, but we will keep that conversation going with NIC and hope to reschedule for the fall. Our staff remain engaged with the peer support system. Those numbers indicate that. And other noteworthy items, we have begun discussion with a local service provider called Paradigm. It's for mental health stabilization services related to court competency. Those conversations are beginning at no cost to Douglas County. It's a partnership among DCC, the Lincoln Regional Center, and a local service provider, Paradigm. It's intended to provide guidance to DCDC and provide supportive and educational services to those that are awaiting placement at LRC and who have returned from LRC and are awaiting trial. The goals of that service are to help individuals achieve competency more quickly and maintain competency once it's been achieved. So I know we have an upcoming meeting to further discuss those services. I do believe that is all of the noteworthy items for the month of February. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have any questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
This is Amber.
Yeah.
The average daily population-
Yeah.
We've talked about this over the last number of months. It looks like it was 1,046, or a decrease of six over the last month. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I think, you know, we've talked about the possible impact of some of our diversion efforts and other programs to lower that population, and that seems to be having some month-to-month actual trending effect. What we might talk about going forward is an annual trend, if we could, you know, maybe look back and see where we were a year ago. I think it's probably trending in the right direction, but the month-to-month is more of a snapshot, and this would give us maybe a little more of a long-term thing.
Yes.
So maybe next month, we could talk like, a year ago, we were at, I don't know, 1,100, and now we're knocking on the door of 1,000.
There is a report provided in enclosure five on the population history. You will find exactly that trend for the year.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing you.
See, enclosure five, under the population history, there's a chart provided to outline the average daily population over the course of a year.
Okay. Oh, there we go. So we are, I guess, year to year, a little bit lower than we were in February, March 23, but significantly lower than we were, say, in the last 12-month high. It looks like we were, you know, 1,100, you know, August, September, which I understand those months are traditionally high months to begin with, but still, year over year, we're not going up.
That's correct.
Right. And I think that that's a good trend. I just want to make people aware of the fact that we're moving in the right direction.
I would agree.
We'd like to see more of that. We always talk about the complement of personnel. Help me again with the enclosure, where we are relative to corrections officer staffing. I know it's here, but it looks like page six might be the place. And particularly, you know, we zero in on the overall staff, which is, it looks like on hand, 488 out of an authorized 491, or 99%. Very good. And the real frontline folks, the corrections officer category, authorized at 347, but we're at 354, 102%.
Correct.
I don't know that I've seen it that high before. Is that kind of a record a little bit?
It's going to be competing with a record, yeah. That is our ultimate goal, to remain just slightly over our total authorized staff number, so that we don't fall behind the curve as we lose people throughout the month.
And I think you mentioned there's a class coming up?
Yes, we're working to fill our next academy class, which is scheduled for April.
Well, that's good news as well. Finally, you know, we have this demographic question that we come back to all the time, and maybe you can help me with that page as well. I know it's towards the end. Do you know the population question I'm-
Yes, I believe we should have it somewhere in enclosure five.
Is this 38, 39, it looks like?
Yeah, 39, yes.
Okay. So again, it appears to be overwhelmingly majority, minority. The race demographics come out at African-Americans representing 44.48% of the population, Hispanics 14.9. So between those two alone, we're at 58, 59% with another, looks like 4%. So over 60% minority, majority, with the Caucasian population being 35.88%. Again, we don't have any control who comes to us, but it's troubling statistic that this seems to be the same or higher month after month after month. Thank you for this.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Boyle?
Thanks again for that report. Just a couple questions. You mentioned recidivism of staff. When you have a new class, about what is the rate of those folks who don't continue on?
We'll have to take a look at that number again. We did recently evaluate it and found that our highest attrition were for employees that were under two years of employment. So I'll have to go back and narrow it down. Do you want to look at like, a year of service and under?
Yeah, more than anything, just kind of curious out of each class that comes in. And I said recidivism, but at the attrition rate, like, I'm just curious what the retention rate is of those employees. And I'm curious just how that runs up against, I would assume, I know it's a stressful job, so I'm just curious how it runs up against others. And it's mostly, I don't need like, individual, not looking for individual organizations like the OPD or something, it's more just in general, how does, how do we match up versus other, others? If there's like, a report on that, I'd be curious.
No problem.
And then the next question is, you mentioned again that we're at all-time high with psychiatric diagnoses and those that are coming in at 49%. I mean, that's probably indicative of what's going on in the community, but at the same time, it's still impressive. I was wondering if with those folks that are coming in, are you, is there a specific trend to the types of diagnoses that they have? Are they related to other things like substance use disorders? Or are they, are they the more pathologically mentally ill, like schizophrenics? Or I'm just curious of the severity of those and then seeing the turnaround of having a significant amount of the folks brought in discharged in just a couple days, there must be something acute going on that's able to be addressed.
Under enclosure seven-
Yep.
You'll find a breakdown of the mental health diagnostic percentages.
I see that, and I think just with this trend, I did, so I think the numbers are so subtle, I couldn't see a difference in the graph. So I was just wondering if just in general, you're getting a feel, is it more folks coming in with, say, for example, fentanyl overdoses? Or do you have, do you have an idea what that's about?
I will follow up on that. I don't want to misspeak on which particular categories are trending. On page 49 of that mental health acuity paradigm, like continuum, it has a breakdown of how some of those diagnoses are categorized, which are a little bit unusual. So I will follow up on a trend question for you.
It mostly just has to do with, as we know, there's the fentanyl crisis, and I'm just curious if a lot of, a lot of people are being brought in to be stabilized at our facility before they're able to be released to some type of treatment center? Or is it really an increase in the number of those people with psychosis? So when you look at that graph on page 49, it does a nice job of outlining that, but it doesn't say anything about those who are a subcategory, I guess, would be those with substance use disorders. So could we, could we or should we be doing even more with that? I know we do a lot with that. At the same time, should we be putting a lot more resources in that to get people the treatment they need before they come into the corrections center?
I will follow up for you.
Yeah, right. Good, thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just following up on Commissioner Boyle's inquiries regarding the substance abuse component of our incarcerated population, which is large. Possibly one metric that we could do to measure this out of our 1,046 population, how many people are incarcerated on drug and alcohol-related charges? You know, having done that work years ago, it struck me that maybe half of the population were in there, and we're talking about everything from drunk drivers to possession of controlled substance. The number would seem to me to be significant enough that if we drilled down on it, you would find that people with drug and alcohol problems get in trouble with the law. It's a pretty good indicator. A lot of people would say that's a real red flag.
Yes.
And I know that we initiated an in-house program that's small, but I think growing, and that's indicated in here, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe you're talking about the 24/7 sobriety program?
Yeah, where is that?
It should be under the pretrial services, CJC and pretrial services section.
Because these are actually treatable people, and we have them for long enough that we could give them significant treatment. And some of our long-term mentally ill folks unfortunately aren't going to be, well, or fortunately, incarcerated at the corrections center long enough to get long-term help for their problems. Drug and alcohol is a different deal. In the general population, a 30-day inpatient is kind of the gold standard for drug and alcohol treatment, and I think the average length of stay here is somewhere just north of 30 days, 45 days.
28.7 days.
Yeah. So that program that we're currently involved with, last I recall, had, I don't know, maybe under 20 individuals that were enrolled, and, you know, they're constantly coming through. But we have space, and I think possibly some folks that we could dedicate to expanding that. Do you have any thoughts on that?
We do have a current arrangement with the Community Mental Health Center, where they are coming onsite to provide intensive outpatient treatment program to a population there at the jail. And we continue to work on increasing the number of individuals assigned to that program. As you mentioned earlier, we do have the 24/7 sobriety program. You can find the summary of statistics for that under the pretrial services summary. 517 individuals participated in that program, but that's a population of the program, of the population that's not currently incarcerated. They're out on pretrial release.
Right. And I know that historically, we've had contract personnel who've come in to provide 12-step programming-
Yes.
Meetings, and that's ongoing, correct?
Yes, yes.
Are those daily? Do you know the schedule of those?
They're certainly weekly. I don't know that they're coming on and providing those services daily.
Okay. Do you have any idea, a ballpark on the attendance to those 12-step meetings?
Not offhand, but I can find out for you.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the reports? If not, there's no need for executive session. I'll take a motion for adjournment. Moved by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Well, now commence the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business, excuse me, are items one, A and B. A being the approval of minutes of the Board Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. And B, the approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. Motion by Morgan, second by Rogers. Please vote.
Motion, excuse me, motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Items A through H. Do we have a motion and second for approval? Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Comments, questions on any of the items, A through H? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item four, presentations. We have one presentation today. Item A, update on the Douglas County Sheriff's Mental Health Co-Responder Program with Sergeant Langemeyer.
Thank you, Douglas County Board. Douglas County Sheriff Aaron Hansen, I just wanted to introduce our Behavioral Health and Wellness Unit Team. Sergeant Jared Langemeyer and co-responder therapist Rachel Wesley. You know, we deal with a variety of mental health crises across the county, whether it be a homeless individual dealing with unaddressed behavioral health, or maybe someone in an affluent community whose child, or maybe whose spouse is, or even a veteran. This, we really appreciate your teamwork and your support in us being able to create and grow this very important and crucial unit. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff, and good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for letting us have some time here today. As the sheriff said, I am Jared Langemeyer. I am sergeant with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. And as of July of last year, I am, one of my responsibilities is leading our Behavioral Health Unit. And so part of the reason I was selected for this position, I have a master's degree in clinical mental health, and on the side, just something I do for fun, I teach mental health and criminal justice at the University of Nebraska at Omaha, because I am so passionate about this. I'm lucky to be paired up with Ms. Rachel Wesley, who is a licensed mental health practitioner. And so together, currently, we make the Behavioral Health Unit. Some of what we do is going out on different calls, assisting deputies on scene when they have calls that have a mental health component. We assist our community members with getting connections to services within the community. There are a lot of resources available in the community that people don't know about. Not nearly as many as would probably be beneficial for Douglas County, but people aren't always aware of the ones that we do have. We develop and present training for the sheriff's office and make sure that our deputies are up to the levels they need to be to be able to properly handle the calls. We advocate for mental health needs with, for our citizens of Douglas County. For example, or I guess, in 2023, I was able to go testify before the state legislator, state legislature, Department of Health and Human Services about some of the gaps in mental health care in Douglas County. And then we also collaborate with outside agencies, both law enforcement agencies and other services, Lutheran Family Services, the VA Hospital, places like that, so that we're able to tackle complex cases. Amongst some of the training and development that we do for the sheriff's office, as we work to better address the mental health needs of Douglas County, we've started using an MH moniker for our calls when we're clearing our calls that makes it a little bit easier for us to track which calls the deputies feel have a mental health component to them. And so that gives us an ability to go and check back up on those. So as we go through this presentation, we're just going to talk a little bit more about what we've been doing so far. We're going to give you a few case studies, talk about where we see this going, what we want to continue to do, and then we'll address any questions you guys might have.
So I just want to start by saying-
So I just want to start by saying mentally ill people are four times more likely to be killed by police. And so you have here a program that saves lives. It saves money and it is something to be built upon. We're following best practices. It increases access to services and it's something we're very proud of at this point.
So so far, we have been, since we've been using the mental health moniker, we just kind of kicked it off starting towards the end of last year. So since December through up to now, we have had ninety calls where deputies have utilized the MH moniker. The thing with that is that, as with anything that's new, this is certainly not capturing all of our mental health or behavioral health-related calls. But it shows that there is a need. We have been out, between Rachel and I, we have responded on thirty of those ninety calls. And you can see we did six in December, eleven in January, sixteen in February. Those numbers are just continually increasing as deputies become more and more familiar with what we're doing, more comfortable with us being there and understanding what's going on. In some of our pictures that we have here, you can see in the bottom left, we've got some deputies that are out on a call and they're using, utilizing some of the training that we've discussed and presented them where they have, this was a mentally ill individual, is actually a juvenile, a big kid, but, you know, looks like an adult sitting there, but was a juvenile. And our deputies are utilizing kind of the relaxed posture, they've got distance, you know, they're not pressuring him, trying to engage in conversation, just using time, distance, and patience as they're, as they're working with this individual. The picture up on the right is Rachel and I, we were working with an individual here down at the courthouse. He was upset with the way some of his proceedings were going and had made some statements that in order to express his displeasure, he was going to come and hang himself right outside the chamber out here with a sign saying that, you know, this is who started this and this is who finished it. We were able to de-escalate him successfully. And I forgot to bring it today, he actually dropped off a thank you present to us at the sheriff's office. So I now have a little stuff known from him that I keep in my office that was, thank you for your help. So now looking into our case studies, our first case study was a domestic disturbance where deputies were en route to a domestic disturbance. This is at the residence of a veteran that we've had multiple prior contacts with. In those prior contacts, he had self-disclosed that he had a PTSD diagnosis. When the deputy arrived on scene, he met the wife outside. She just said that, you know, her husband was acting weird, kind of like he does when he was drinking. He denied having any alcohol in his system at that point in time, but she was uncomfortable with it. Since she was outside with her kids already, he just had her get in their car and go wait up the street. Unfortunately, we were at minimum staffing that night, and so our deputy waited. I think it was almost ten minutes before our next deputy, which was myself, before I was able to get there because we were handling other calls. Things, I got there much quicker, things escalated quickly when all of a sudden he said, hey, I just heard a gunshot. So we hustled, got there, was able to make contact with this veteran by phone. And we ended up having a standoff for roughly an hour. In that time, SWAT was starting to assemble, they were arriving on scene, and they were making their plans on how they were going to make entry to the house. Luckily, because of my connections within the mental health world, I was able to speak with, in between negotiating with him, I was able to have contact with a person I work with at the VA. And so I was able to, as I negotiated with this individual, assure him that he would be able to go to the VA and get treatment for his PTSD before there would, you know, any legal consequences were going to be dealt with. His main concern was getting help for his PTSD. Typically, that's not something that in law enforcement, we're very comfortable to do just because hospitals are not always great about letting us know. If we drop somebody off to get mental health treatment, they don't always let us know before they discharge them. And so it was only because of the relationships I had at the VA and being confident that they would let us know that we'd be able to pick him up after he got his treatment that the folks on the law enforcement side that I work with were comfortable with us taking that approach. It is my understanding that the veteran involved in this case has, is either under consideration or has been accepted into the Veterans Court, which we appreciate the partnership with the board where we have a deputy that is working with the Veterans and Drug Court, helping to monitor some of these cases. And so we appreciate your support in that.
This next case study involves a rising need as well with our geriatric population. You had a longtime resident of Douglas County. He had lived in this home for eighty years. He was very isolated. He was estranged from his family. And he was decompensating and it was, he was decompensating quickly and showing signs and symptoms of psychosis. He explained to deputies how the burglaries, or the burglars had taken the pool table through the ceiling and fantastical stories. So these were high priority calls, burglaries, burglaries in progress. And over a short course of time, a few months, it had increased the frequency. We had got to the point where it was six calls a week. So we were able to get him connected with a guardian with expertise in this area. He also had significant not, medical needs he was not addressing and lived in an extremely, it was a dangerous living environment and a hoarding situation. So this was, this was a success story we were very proud of and we were proud of that.
So in addition, as this, so he was living in this hoarding situation. He was in a house, our first contact with him was right after that cold snap where we had those negative forty-degree days. He was living in a house that he had no running water, he had no heat, had electricity, but that was it. And so he had these substandard living conditions. When we met with him, he had frostbite on a couple of fingers, he had a catheter bag. And just, he really just was not taking care of himself. And so it was very alarming. As the number of calls increased, the severity of his delusions and things were also increasing to the point where because he didn't feel safe, he felt like people were in his house burglarizing despite there being no evidence of that. He started coming to the door armed with a revolver. And so that really raises alarms for us as deputies as people, you know, we don't know if he thinks people are prowling around his house that, you know, clearly could get to a situation where he takes a shot at deputies either through a window, through a door, whatever the case may be. This case is still in progress. Last we knew, he was in the hospital but is working with this professional guardian that they are working on getting his house cleaned up and getting him into the services and things that he needs. For our case study number three, this was another veteran that lives in the Bennington area. So at the time that we got involved with this case, this was one of the first cases that we dealt with at inception of our behavioral health unit. It was mid-September and there had been sixty-eight calls for service to this house of varying natures. And you can see on the slides the different ways, but there were thirty-seven check well-being calls. Forty of the sixty-eight calls were between the hours of midnight and four AM. So on the surface, this gentleman presented as somebody with a drinking problem. But he had combat-related PTSD, he was a decorated veteran. But we had a hard time getting him services because on the surface, he presented as just an alcoholic. And, you know, you can't do a board of mental health warrant on an alcoholic. Yet if you take him into emergency protective custody, as soon as he sobers up, you know, the the hospitals kick him loose. And so he wasn't getting the services. I and other professionals that I collaborated with truly believed that his plan was suicide by cop. And I believe that based on his training, a number of these calls were dry runs, checking our response. How do we respond? What's going to bring out, what's going to bring us there quickest? What's going to bring us there with lethal means at the ready? I I think it was only a matter of time before he got up the courage to force our hand and make us make a life and death decision.
And I just want to say that that's a really, it's a relatively new development. When I first started in this field just a few years ago, you hardly heard of suicide by cop. Now, I feel like it's, we're hearing it very often, at least a few times a week.
So as we tackled this case, initially was, again, it was very difficult because he presented as primarily having a substance use issue. And I felt like I was running into wall after wall and trying to get this gentleman help. And so I took a page out of Mike Myers playbook and I developed a, or I put together a multi, multidisciplinary team. And we worked with everybody that had any skin in the game with this gentleman. So we worked with the Bennington Police Department, Lutheran Family Services, VA Hospital, and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. We're all on this call. And we were able to put together essentially a treatment plan. And with our way of working together, getting, seeing the whole picture, with all of that, we were able to get the county attorney to approve and and send forward to the Board of Mental Health to get a warrant issued. We were able to plug him into this plan at the VA. And since our intervention, since he went and got the help at the VA, we have only had one call to that house since then, and that was an intrusion alarm. So that was another, another call that we were very, or another case that we were very proud of. So as we're coming up, looking at what's next, we are looking to build a peer support program that we want to work with a lot of the smaller agencies. Peer support program in that having officers or firefighters assisting other officers and firefighters when they're having issues. In this line of work, we see and deal with things that nobody should ever have to see and deal with. And it's hard to go and talk to somebody when they just don't quite understand it. That's why I went back to school to get my master's in clinical mental health because it's a lot easier to talk to somebody when they've been there, been through that. So we're looking to develop a peer support program and we want to work with our smaller agencies within Douglas County and a lot of our volunteer fire departments because, quite frankly, they don't have the manpower to be able to put these together and and run them themselves. So we look to be kind of the hub of that and all work together, providing that. We're also looking to continue to build and better integrate with the Board of Mental Health. There's been a lot of issues within the board with not having anybody doing any kind of follow-up and things like that. People are falling through the cracks. And so we're looking to build and integrate into that and cooperate with Board of Mental Health to offer services where we may. So thank you, guys, for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much for that presentation. We're going to jump to Commissioner Friend, then Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sergeant, thank you. And Rachel, thanks for the information. Do you, the, the process and procedural doctrines that you, that you are driving for these type of responses, they're obviously including a tremendous amount of training of deputies. A couple of quick questions. Is it occurring, is it occurring front-end? Are they getting it at the academy now? As opposed to, you know, on-duty training type of scenarios? Are we, are we sending individuals to the academy and are we implementing these doctrines or strategies there upfront?
So there are, there is more mental health training in the academy today than when I went through. But I would say you need some time on the job before we're sending deputies through like CIT programs and things. You need to have some experience to lean on because you don't know what you don't know until you don't know it. And so I feel it is much better to have deputies be able to look back on calls in their career and be like, oh, that's what was going on. Oh, I could have handled that differently. I think you're going to be able to embrace it a lot more. Again, you just, you don't know. When you're in the academy, you want to focus on the, you're doing your, your shooting, your defensive tactics, your driving and all of that stuff. That commands a lot more, at least speaking from my experience, that commands a lot, commanded a lot more my attention during the academy than my four-hour block of mental health things. It's, it's not nearly exciting. And when you haven't done the job yet, you don't know that that mental health thing is where you really need to pay attention because it's such a huge part of your job.
Right. And thank you, Sergeant. I wasn't implying, wasn't, didn't mean to imply that it should be. I was just curious as to how that was being implemented. Is the, the amount of individuals in our community affected by these issues, by the mental health issues, are being obviously reflected in our corrections numbers? Are there, are you, and this is a loaded question, are you strained resource-wise? Right now, I'm staring at two people who are dealing with this. I know you're subcontracting some of these services, but in unincorporated areas and the folks and the growth that we have, at least in the northern and southwest areas of Douglas County, these issues have just got to be multiplying.
They absolutely are. And this is something that, you know, in an ideal world, we would have a co-responder, you know, with twenty-four hour, twenty-four hours a day, seven day a week coverage. That's not a reality right now, but, you know, we are in the office basically from eight to four, Monday through Friday. And clearly, that is not the only time people are going to experience a mental health or behavioral health crisis. We could use a lot of help. We could use, eventually, I would like to see us grow in the near future to having one or two more co-responders where we're covering more of a, maybe a six to ten, six to midnight kind of timeframe and then potentially a couple deputies that can help with doing our follow-up and doing some of that outreach and things that we like to do.
There's also an informal education piece, having a co-responder on-site. You're, you're able to build rapport with those officers and that's where the, the team part comes out. So you're not getting that same kind of pushback. It's adopted into the culture and they do appreciate it. And so there's something to be said about that as well.
Thank you. That's time. Commissioner Rogers?
Sergeant, can I, I want to continue with Commissioner Friend's training question. Help me understand. Help me understand your answer a little more because it sounds like, okay, you're, you're in with this or you're not? Because it sounds like the option is, it's not a priority for people coming through first, coming through as a law enforcement for the first time. It seems like you're leaning to a person that's been on the job a while. So if we're not giving it to them when they first come in, what's the situation when they encounter somebody and they haven't got a feel? I mean, it's, it's sounding optional because it's sounding like they may not embrace it from the start. And so because they're not embracing it from the start, they're not going through it in the academy. That's, am I hearing that right?
Sir, what do you mean that we're not, we're not embracing it?
The answer to Commissioner Friend was, based on your experience, the training should be for somebody that's been there a while, that's got some real-life experience. Well, are we in or we're out? Because if we're, if you're doing this and you're seeing these encounters, why isn't it being provided to somebody first time they come into the academy? So what if somebody goes into the academy, they're out on the street and they come into this situation and they don't have this training?
Right. So we do, within the academy, they provide mental health first aid, which gives a basic overview of what mental health, mental illness looks like and ways to kind of help approach and de-escalate those things. But for example, it's, I think about my time when I went through, I, I had two years on the job when I went through the CIT, the forty-hour CIT program where I got that more extensive crisis intervention training. And I looked back on calls where we had a woman, you know, I was still in field training. We had a woman who was, said she wasn't suicidal, but she was self-harming. She had lost her husband to suicide. And it was the day before the anniversary of his death. But then she had also had to put her dog down that her husband of his death, but then she had also had to put her dog down that her husband had, her late husband had given her. And so she was superficially cutting her arm because it was a way for her to release the pain. And she wasn't suicidal, but I was like, okay, so this is, you're, you're cutting yourself to let the pain out? And she's like, yep, and it's totally normal. I was like, okay, so you're cutting yourself and you think it's normal? Yep, you're going to go to the hospital. What I know now, she probably didn't need to go to the hospital. She should have had some, you know, maybe some safety planning, looked at, at setting her up with services, didn't need to go to the hospital. But you don't understand those kind of things. It, it's hard to put into context when you're a brand-new recruit sitting in the academy. You, you have to have some of those experiences to be able to reflect on, to really, truly appreciate the information that you're receiving as they talk about this nuances of mental and behavioral health.
Fifty seconds.
I, I appreciate that, but I still got a little bit of concern because what's the difference between a person that goes through the academy and they haven't had the experience of going out on the, on the street?
I will say, um...
Let me, let me, let me clarify a little bit. I'll, I'll give a little bit of global perspective. So in the academy, we have mental fir-, we have mental, mental first aid training. And so we give that foundational, basic understanding of, uh, intervention and de-escalation and what, what Sarah, what Sergeant Langermyers is referring to is full-blown CIT training, that crisis intervention training, the 40-hour certification. And that typically waits, that certification occurs once you have at least two years on the job. So we do train in that basic mental health training in the academy and the ongoing training. And, but I think what's getting lost in the, in the translation here is the difference between that foundational training and that full-blown certification CIT training.
That's time. Thank you. I know you have a burning comment, Rachel, but I gotta go to Commissioner Morgan quick and then we'll loop back around.
No, it's okay.
Really appreciate your presentation and information. And I'm happy to hear that you're working with the VA and they stepped in on that case. And the only thought I have, and I have little knowledge, but I'm thinking it'd be good for some of our legislators to hear more about this too and the issues you face in the future. You know, when they're not in session, to at least give them some of the challenges you face and the degree of those challenges. Cause it's pretty heartbreaking.
Absolutely. And actually, I've had Senator Fredrickson came and did, uh, well, did a ride-along with me for, uh, about six hours one day. And so I've been in contact with him since then and he is looking forward to coming back again. We just have to arrange a time when it fits in his schedule. So we've been definitely doing outreach, uh, to the legislature and looking to get some help.
And my ideas aren't very good, but in case, you know, this summer, you decided, hey, in June, we're going to have a couple hours out at the sheriff's office inviting some county, the county commissioners, some legislators that might have time on a Thursday afternoon or whatever it might be, or morning. It could be, uh, an idea that I'm just throwing out to you that, you know, if we can get some, just hear some of the obstacles and challenges.
Anytime you'd like to come, just let me know. We'd be happy to have you.
But thank you again.
Did you, all right, we'll, we'll go to Commissioner Rogers.
Sergeant, uh, or ma'am, uh, Ms. Wesley, explain to me, what, what's the, what's the privacy protocols or you have in, in place? Or do you have any in place, the fact that you're making contact with them from a health perspective? What other protocols you got internally in regards to information sharing and things of that sort? Because it, I'm not a lawyer, but it feels like there's some HIPAA stuff going on here when you contact. What's, what's the privacy protocols going on?
So we follow the same standard as HIPAA. I will say, um, so we get a release if it's for outside agencies, if it's not, um, absolutely necessary. However, um, if there's a threat or, um, high risk of, uh, for safety, um, there is a legal precedent with the Tarasoff case. And so you can, um, for the purpose of, um, helping, helping people saving lives to that effect, if it's just, it, it has to be a life or death situation.
Let me ask you, so you, I guess my other question, last question is, you made a reference to some work that you're doing with the volunteer fire departments? I'm assuming we're taking that on at our cost. Are there any other agreements and partnerships out there that you got that we're taking on at our cost?
So this is, that is in our, our what's next. Um, there have been discussions. Uh, it's still in its infancy, so there has not been much of anything outside of discussions. But right now, the idea is that we're going to have these partnerships with some of the volunteer agencies. And I think there is, uh, plans for fund sharing, uh, in, for the training aspects and things.
Do you have some, are you keeping cost of this partnership you're doing with the volunteer fire department now that we can see?
There's nothing, outside of conversations, we haven't done anything yet.
I'm making a request. I don't want to see you answer that.
Peer support programs are generally auxiliary in nature. You're talking about training up volunteers in various agencies to support each other internally. And so we're in the, the early stages of trying to find partners, trying to find the right, uh, trainers in order to see what would be possible. So there is, there's been no costs associated with the discussions.
No cost? Planned or none at all? Okay. Thank you.
We share a lot of the same clients, um, from what I've seen. And it's not theirs versus ours. You see, I, I've seen, working in different settings, um, you, you're working in an outpatient clinic and then at the hospital after they're EPC'd, um, they're in corrections, they're in the shelters. And this is a, a system-wide problem that we all share. It's not, um, whoever, you know, passed the buck. It's, right now, we have to address it all together.
I, I hear you. That, that's, it's, but there's, I just want to know where the costs are coming from. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, and thank you. Could we get the slides that you've presented today?
Yeah, they have been emailed to somebody? Uh, Commissioner Borgerson, I'll, I'll pass it along right now.
Okay, thank you. And then also, um, to me, this is kind of a, um, when we talk about resources, there's already mobile crisis teams in place and happen in place that aren't being utilized. And so when you start talking about challenges and obstacles and instead of automatically a need to increase your budget, um, the mobile crisis teams are out there, just for reference anyway.
And they're adjacent, they're different, um, it's, it's a lot different having a co-responder on scene. They're not being utilized because they're not part of the, um, they're not embedded at the department, if that makes sense. And I certainly can say that I, I remember there was pushback at first and rightfully so. Officers weren't used to having a mental health professional and it's, it's hard to explain. So I never, I never had to explain. I just went to the calls and they could see it for themselves. And then they realized I was making their jobs, um, easier in a sense and better and bettering the lives of the people and reducing that misuse of resources in a lot of ways. Because when you have a problem, who are you going to call? You're going to call the police no matter what.
And the difference between mobile crisis response and a, having a co-responder is that Rachel will listen to the radio and monitors radio traffic. And so if she hears a call that it sounds like this has a, a mental health component to it, she will just start heading that way. And she'll stage up about a block away and just says, hey, deputies, I'm here, I'm on scene, so if you're ready for me, um, or when you're ready for me, let me know. And then once they get up there, they make sure the scene is safe, then they will go and, uh, or she goes up and helps them address the needs. And so it, it's a more immediate, um, utilization. Uh, a lot of the hangup is that when you've already been on scene for 10 to 15 minutes, determine that you want mobile crisis response to come. And then you call mobile crisis response and it takes them another 30 minutes to get there. And then you're on scene while they are resolving the situation. When you have a co-responder that is dispatching at roughly the same time, you know, it, it can take, make a call 15 minutes versus 45 minutes. And so it's just, uh, and there's also the nuances, um, just of the, knowing the, having a better understanding of the policies and procedures of the agency and, uh, being able to have that follow-up, being able to debrief a little more with, uh, we will frequently debrief calls with the deputies and, uh, which is where a lot of that informal, uh, training and learning happens, which helps them to better approach calls like this in the future. So it's, uh, yes, mobile crisis response is there and it is a valuable aid that goes, runs alongside with what we're doing. And, and we work closely with Lutheran Family Services. So it, it, it's a very valuable asset to have there, uh, but it, they're not exactly the same thing.
Twenty seconds. All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding the presentation? Larry?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I thought up a few questions and maybe some tongue-in-cheek, uh, comments, uh, but thank you very much. 2024 is an anniversary year of the book 1984. Tongue-in-cheek, but this type of thing, a, as I've recently been rereading, uh, excuse me, books such as this, makes me think that possibly you're getting over the gray line here of, uh, of citizens' rights. I've had many instances in my life and not just, uh, personal family, but my grandson's experience with the social services system, where checklists are, are used to determine if a person is maybe in a mental health crisis or whatever. They don't necessarily all prove solutions or correct assessments. Because a professional's busy, they don't necessarily want to explore anything else except what's on the checklist. Checklist could be dangerous. For example, I might perceive and complain that somebody in this room might be stalking me. And from that, I might say, well, does he work for the commissioners? Because of all the empty chairs in here, there's a person that has to come down and sit right next to me. And you all know that he's one of, like me, that have been here often. So here I am, and I might be declared right now mentally ill, mentally ill. But overall, a lot of years, I've had people say, oh, you guys have a dysfunctional family? Oh, you guys are misbehaving or your grandson is misbehaving? Based on somebody else's, uh, thoughts about it, somebody else's perception. I know you all perceive me as maybe in a mental health crisis and sometimes hateful. So you call me out of order and maybe sometimes have me walked out. That's making maybe prejudgments. So I'm asking it to walk very carefully and maybe these people can explain to us in situations such as, uh, a swatting incident where officers are called to a scene because somebody is reported as dangerous, but it's not true. How many incidents might be because of a mental health call? Or because somebody thinks that person's house looks kind of messy and he might be mentally ill? Call in the planning department? Why? Planning department goes in and takes a quick look, he cares the person mentally ill because they haven't had time to clean out all the junk, paperwork or whatever. So you have him assessed, you have that person assessed, maybe against his rights. So please, uh, very careful with this. And it's like with, on school grounds, the, uh, I forget the word, uh, but a police officer. When the police officer is on school grounds, he has to more or less go by what the school system says, by their rules, not, not the police department's rules.
That's time, Larry.
Is that the case with sheriff's deputies? Will they have to go by the mental health experts' assessments and rules?
Thank you, Larry.
Rather than their own? Thank you.
Weetie, Manis, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I think this is a good preliminary program, commissioners. They, if they're seeking support, this is the right place to come forward. Individually, a commissioner could be an advocate, help connect different departments, um, with different people in local government and state government. But, you know, on, on this issue on the mental health in, in the county, it seems like we're going back to square one every time it comes forward. Like, are we going to do this way? Are we going to do it that way? How are we going to do this? I think there's dysfunction among you. You know, that, that's what some, uh, is commonly said about the seven of you is that you guys don't talk to each other. And, uh, if you're not talking to each other, how do you expect to, uh, be, uh, problem solvers? When, um, you know, things like this come forward, there, Nebraska got a billion dollars from the feds. And that was with ARPA, uh, funding. And I heard from my friend that, uh, you haven't spent $55 million of it. So I, I think that supporting the preliminary program, um, would, uh, would be good use of the funds. And the stories you heard from the sergeant, uh, that's like a, a good, um, a, a good reason to build a mental, community mental health facility on the west side of corrections. Because even though law enforcement may come in contact, uh, with these citizens, doesn't mean they have to go to the hospital, doesn't mean they have to go to jail. They need to go to a specialized, uh, a place that can treat them clinically, uh, mentally. And, uh, I think that, you know, that, uh, the time to, uh, to explore your options is coming to an end, especially because the, the, uh, the federal monies are supposed to be spent by the, uh, spent, allocated, assigned, I'm not sure, but by the end of this year. So the time, um, for trying to find solutions is wrapping up. You are, you know, you're up here. You've, you've seen the landscape. You know your, your, your partners, you know the, uh, surrounding areas. So, uh, I just, um, think that you should, uh, really take a position of urgency, um, and start, uh, putting together what the community mental health, uh, solutions are. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Good afternoon. Jacoila Yarborough, 2417 Burdette Street. I'm pleased to hear that, you know, at least, uh, that law enforcement is considering, um, mental health at a more serious level, to the point where we're planning, you know, how we engage with individuals who do struggle with mental health. Uh, my primary concern, and I do want this to be addressed in what seems to be the planning phases of this project, is, um, the engagement of minorities while we're addressing... phases of this project, is the engagement of minorities while we're addressing mental health. As we've struggled with consistently in Douglas County, it's not a secret, it's nothing new, disproportionate minority contact continues to be something that we struggle with. So I would like to know, and I was pleased to hear that there was some collaboration, considering collaboration with some community partners, but it's very important that those people are involved at the forefront of any type of development plan, because those are the individuals who are going to appropriately address any cultural bias that, you know, we all have blind spots. It would be proper for us to make sure that we're addressing that upfront by being as inclusive as we can during the planning process. I think it would be, we would be remiss if we did not intentionally engage community partners from the place where we see the most disproportionate minority contact, which is going to be that northeast Omaha corridor, District Three. Particularly the Twenty-Fourth Street corridor is what I'm thinking about, because even from north to south, that's where we see, from Twenty-Fourth Street to Sixteenth Street, that is essentially like the wild, wild west essentially for mental health, and it's just completely untamed, it's getting out of control. So I am excited that the county is, and the sheriff's office are taking a vested interest in what we do, how we truly serve our population that struggles with mental health. Again, what comes to the forefront of my mind, whenever we deal with law enforcement, whenever we deal with any type of policy development, is disproportionate minority contact. Additionally, what should be considered, I think, other community collaborators who should be involved, or any individuals who have been specifically addressing the lead poisoning and long-term effects of lead exposure, which studies have shown, you know, it's even done studies since two thousand and eleven, to show that the lead in our soil has directly contributed to that. Once we are looking at the entire picture of what the true causes of these mental health issues are, and bringing all of the players to the table, I think that we'll end up with something that we truly do like. And so, as usual, I am very open to any type of open discussion. I'm at tables with different partners all day. I sit in board meetings all day long, so please use me as a resource, and I'll be reaching out. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Otherwise, we will wrap up the presentation and move on to item five, public hearing. We have one public hearing, item A, which is a tax amendment, updates to cell tower regulations to allow for some special use permit applications to be handled administratively. Oh, yeah. We're on, sorry, we're on the public hearing, yeah, with Laura. Go ahead.
Good morning, commissioners. Laura Dietrich, planning and zoning coordinator. We have tax amendment updates to our cell tower regulations to allow for some processes to be administered, to be approved administratively. Currently, with our regulations, a special use permit for cell tower modifications would be required for a new tower site, a co-location or modification of an existing facility. With the proposed amendment, it would allow for equipment changes and co-locations to be approved administratively. What it would not allow for is for the first wireless installation at a site, a modification which would increase the height, a reconstruction of an existing tower, addition of an accessory structure, or application of a building permit. Planning Commission recommended approval at their February twenty-first meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. This is a public hearing, which is now open for comments and questions. Is there any from commissioners or the board? Otherwise, action can be taken today after closing the public hearing. Seeing no questions, I'll close the public hearing. What is due on the board? Motion by Borgson to approve, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. We'll move on to committee discussions and actions. Item six, first, six A, which is the finance budget report as presented. Also, item B, administrative services, topic and resolution associated. Just for clarification, to the fairness of Committee Chair Rogers, I wanted to clarify, this is put forth by Patrick specifically. Sometimes it's a little confusing when you see an item under committees, so just for that clarification, and also, I'll provide some context briefly as well. But just to read the resolution here, item B one, resolution approving an addendum to the current contract with Carlson West Provondurik Architects for design services to provide initial high-level design study for a possible relocation of the Community Mental Health Center, also referred to as CMHC. So I'll provide some quick context, and we'll move to questions and comments. So go ahead and count this as my round. Yeah, motion and second, please, thank you. Motion by Borgson, second by Boyle. Quick context, I mean, the resolution kind of speaks for itself, but this is essentially a way to explore in a little bit more detail what the cost associated would be, and what the renderings would look like in regards to a possible relocation of the Community Mental Health Center. It is currently within the health center that we have, Forty Second and Center, on the fifth floor, the Douglas County Health Center that is. The idea is to look at two potential alternate locations for community mental health, both of which are owned by Douglas County. So the first idea is the Health and Human Services Building, which is just slightly northwest of the Douglas County Health Center. Again, it is a building owned by Douglas County that we could look at, what would the cost would be, what would the renderings look like to put the Community Mental Health Center in that building as a standalone mental health center? There would be renovation involved within the building, potentially in addition to the building, if more space was needed. That would be determined by the architects and the study. So that is the first idea in the resolution. And then the second idea within the same resolution would be to also allow for a study of costs and renderings to place a new community mental health center on what we refer to as the barn house. Is that correct, barn house? And so it is also a building and property owned by Douglas County at the Forty Second and Center Health Corridor. So both are within the same area of the current Community Mental Health Center. And again, this would not obligate the board to actually move forward with either option. It would just provide us more information of cost, of renderings. Then, once we get those studies back in the near future, the board could decide whether it wants to move forward with either of those options, or not do any of the options, depending on cost and other details that we look at. So that is where this resolution is kind of stemming from. So with that, I will go to Commissioner Kavanaugh, and then Commissioner Morgan.
This kind of deals with a topic that I have been, for over a year, I guess, presenting to the board and asking for funding to explore repurposing portions of the existing Douglas County Health Center building, which contains the behavioral health component that we're talking about here. And I don't see that as part of this. It's almost like we won't look at the first option. All of the public testimony that's been had on this topic from the public has not been about these two venues, which keep popping up. It's been about the venue that's already built and utilized for mental health. Repurposing portions of that, modernizing portions of that should be part of the study. In my conversations with the chairman, my understanding was that that would be part, particularly the fifth-floor component of the Douglas County Health Center, would be part of this, and I just don't see it on there. So I'm looking for, you know, some recognition that, along with these, repurposing a building that the state's been utilizing and maybe tearing down and rebuilding a new facility, that we look at a study of the existing facility that we could refurbish at a fraction of the cost. I've presented to this board over the last year or so exactly that proposal, again and again and again, with the request to do exactly what we're talking about doing here on two entirely different facilities. I understand that the wording here, I can read this, to restrict us to two options that have had no public hearings. The Administrative Services Committee, under which this is listed, didn't hold a hearing on this. In the town halls that we participated in around, the testimony was, why don't you do something with the facility that you own? And the proposal that I presented repeatedly to this board, and that we've heard almost unanimously from the public, detailed ideas of repurposing that, why don't we look at that? It's going to be a situation where we take a facility that we already own, that we already utilize for this specific purpose, and we modernize it, and we expand it. We've looked at this with architects and engineers, and the cost numbers have come back in extremely affordable levels, but we're not looking at it. We're not looking at it here. We're going to drive the train to new construction, new facilities, regardless of what, you know, people have expressed their desires to do. And it wouldn't cost us remarkably much, if anything more than contained in here, to look at the existing facility that we already own. But that doesn't seem to be the sense. It's almost like we're not going to look at the facility that we own, for whatever reason. It's problematic in a number of regards. We've talked about, and I have not supported, ever, spending tens of millions of dollars at the corrections center to build essentially a facility for inmates, to do mental health services for inmates, without doing anything for the population that we have at Forty Second Street.
Twenty seconds.
Along the same lines. So what I'm saying is, why don't we do an honest appraisal of all of our resources at Forty Second Street? And the same thing, I could support that. But as it is, if we're going to, you know, preclude discussions of what has been repeatedly put to this board as a possible alternative, I don't know that I can go along with that. I think that...
That's time, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
I think the cost to do this is about twelve thousand dollars, if I'm correct. I thought it's important to at least state that, what the amount of money being spent, and I think that's pretty economical for this kind of thing. Are we mandated to furnish that building to the state? Pardon? We are?
Office space.
And do we pay all the utilities and operating costs? I think that's most interesting to me. But I know that in today's market, there's plenty of other office space, and I think we could talk with the state about that, you know, in close proximity or whatever. And I think that option may be a very good one. Do at least explore and check it out. And I know Sheri, I think, is, thinks that's maybe a good idea to also. So I don't know if you're ready for a motion on that or not.
Mr. Borgson has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support this as kind of a compromise, because I still believe in my heart that the best place would have been down by Corrections at the old bus station. But that's not going to happen, and so I think these are great alternatives to look at. I would be against adding any cost to looking at repurposing the existing space, because one of the main purposes to look at a alternative to our community mental health facility location was to remove it from our nursing home. Across this country, there is not a community mental health center embedded in a nursing home where people live. And we have talked for years and years and years about the ability to remove that facility and put it someplace else, so that it could be a true nursing home, a place, again, where people live. And so to go backwards, I think, would be a disservice to those who live there, and to those we are serving within the Community Mental Health Center. Plus, this is a golden opportunity for us here in Douglas County to really do something, instead of just talking about what we should be doing about mental health. This is really something that we can move forward with and make better for the community in community mental health services to those that we serve. And so I think, again, these alternatives, and I know that we looked at one time with the barn, the old barn location, so I don't think it's going to take a whole lot of additional looking at that space to see if it's feasible. So again, I think these are good alternatives to what we should be looking at for our Community Mental Health Center.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll take a second round, if you can start my time, just for some real quick couple comments here. So I have spent time, I know others have as well, talking to Sheri, our Director of Community Mental Health, and her leadership team, and why they see it's preferred, appropriate, and the pathway they want to go in regards to having a standalone facility, and the enhancements to our mental health services that can come with that. So I would definitely recommend kind of leaning on their feedback in that regard, and I would call her up here if she was here, but I don't think she's here today, in regards to the sentiment from our own mental health team. On top of that, you know, in regards to, I still hold it as one of the cards that could be looped back to in regards to renovating the fifth floor of the health center. If that's like the backup option we need to go to in regards to the amount of funding we have, like if these studies come back and say, well, due to inflation, both options are going to be over thirty million dollars, and we only have, you know, twenty-two-point-five to work with or so, then, you know, then it probably wouldn't be practical to pursue the two options if they came in at thirty million plus hypothetically. But if they come in, you know, within range of what we're working with, then that would be a different story, and the potential lies to move forward with one of the options. But I still hold it as one of the cards that can be looped back to in regards to renovating the fifth floor, if that is a last resort in regards to money available, and then, to an extent, timing as well of these ARPA funds. So just two bits of comment there on my end. Any other questions or comments on this resolution? Larry? Oh, sorry, Commissioner, I'll come back to you right after, Larry.
Thank you. Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha six eight one three two. Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. I can remember for quite a few years back, when some of this started coming up, things got done without the vote of the citizens. And in a republic, we're supposed to be the boss. So once again here, you need to think about, yes, you need to keep mentally ill people away from the corrections center. You need to have the corrections center have its own staff for treating mentally health impaired inmates. You don't make an inmate out of a mentally health person. And you don't make a convict out of a mentally health person. But when you house them together, you treat them together, that's essentially what you're going to do. I have a number of people I've talked to, and they say, oh, whatever you do, you don't get arrested and incarcerated, particularly in Douglas County, because you'll become an inmate just by being there, even if you're mentally ill, and vice versa. And that makes a lot of sense. They're two different populations. And so what if they have to live on the fifth floor of a revited building? We already own it. Person that's mentally health ill, impaired, doesn't necessarily have to have a condo or a green space or a golf course out there. Shake your head, but that's true. If I'm mentally ill, I don't care for that. I need warmth and comfort and help, that's what I need. And you've got a lot of that already out there on about, I don't know how big of an area, Forty Second Center, and that whole center shopping center, is that owned by Douglas County? Because there's a lot of social service things there. You can bus them from one place over to there for their help and back. People that are visiting, you can bus them over and back, and it's safe. You've already got the... You've already got the buses. But I kind of wonder, is the planning department kind of involved in this? Do we want a new building out there so people can profit from it? Developers, it's, you know, who knows? Can you get tip for it? Who knows? But it needs to be on the ballot, so citizens can tell you what your job is or isn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. We'll go Commissioner Kavanaugh, then Commissioner Friend.
Just following up, this is an issue that goes back a couple of years now, that involves a facility that we own and houses hundreds of long-term care people currently, many of them with mental health issues, dual diagnosed, but mental health issues as well as physical disabilities, for life. We're already doing this. When I was at the NACO conference in Washington, DC, I went to the county's role in long-term care, got information regarding the massive amount of people in nursing homes owned by counties across the country. And we are the majority supplier of those services to Americans today, counties. It's our job. It's recognized everywhere. I'm going to share this with whoever wants it, but it gives you a real indication of what a obligation we have to provide this service, and we already have, and we have for a long time, and hopefully for a long time to come. It needs help right now. The Douglas County Health Center recently experienced an outage of hot water. The Douglas County Youth Center during the sub-zero temperatures the first of the year experienced an outage of heat. And we're talking about spending $30 million on the correction center on a new building, when we've got people sitting on Forty-Second Street, long-term care patients, residents, with no hot water. Children sitting in our youth center, when we have an empty one across the street with no heat during sub-zero weather. What are we thinking? We have tens of millions of dollars of federal funds to utilize, and I think before we start building new buildings, following the tradition that we got with the kids' jail fiasco, we might actually take care of the buildings that we have, take care of the people that we are responsible for, that are there today, that during 10 below zero didn't have heat, that are long-term residents and didn't have hot water. Why don't we do something about that before we go off on another building spree that may or may not serve anybody's purposes? We need to take care of what we've got with what we've got, and right now, that involves the Douglas County Health Center, to an extent, the Douglas County Youth Center, and this massive amount of federal money that we've got, before we build extensions to the jail, questionable legality, and before we start tearing down a new construction on the campus that has a perfectly good health center already sitting there. It just needs hot water. It just needs some upgrades. We've done millions of dollars of upgrades in this building and other buildings using these same funds, but the ones that have long-term residents there for life, the ones that have children, they're incarcerated, no, not so much. You know, I'm not sure that we are doing the best that we can with the resources that we have here. And all I'm saying is, if we're going to do this study, let's include that option. I understand what my colleague, Commissioner Garcia, says about revisiting this. I don't know that it's a last resort. It seems to me to be an idea whose time has come, and it's been here for some time, and it's been presented to this board for some time, and for whatever reason, we are off on a path-
Ten seconds.
-like we did before on the kids' jail, that will lead to not a good solution. So let's take a step back and do the right thing. Let's look at the health center.
That's time. Thank you so much. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you're in, if you're involved in deliberative committee decision-making or legislative decision-making long enough, this is, it's bound to happen, and it happens pretty, pretty religiously. What I've, what I've heard over the last 15 minutes are 15 different problems. Fifteen, I counted them. I was checking them off. Our job is short-term mental health care at the county level. Statutorily, the job belongs to the state of Nebraska. So we can narrow the problem down after we, after we determine what our statutory authority is. And let me make something really, really clear. I think I can. The community mouth, the community mental health transition, or the infrastructure transition, what we're dealing with, the problem that we're dealing with right now, is, is that we own, we don't just earn, own the long-term care center. The citizens of Douglas County own the long-term care center. That's true. The citizens of Douglas County also own the HHS building right across the street, or right across the parking lot, from DCYC. Citizens of Douglas County own that. We're not, we're not reaching out for space over by crossroads. Citizens of Douglas County own it. The citizens of Douglas County own that old barn area to the, to the north. The citizens, you, the citizens of Douglas County own that. We are looking to analyze the type of options that we have available to us, based on the ARPA funding that was delivered to us. Not bonding, not running it out and asking for the Douglas County folks to come up with more property tax money. Sure, it's tax money, it's coming from a different angle, but we either spend it or it goes away. It goes back, and then Ohio will get it, or Brooklyn will get it, or something of that nature. Okay, fine. If that's what this commit, decision-making by committee wants, let's go ahead and drag our feet for a few more months. Fine with me. Currently, and here's the final point, currently, the community mental health center is within a long, is, resides within a long-term care center, a nursing home. As Commissioner Borgerson pointed out, show me another location in this nation where we do that. You want to talk about difficulty? You want to talk about issues? We've already run into them, we've seen them. Now, I'm with Commissioner Garcia. I think we have to analyze, and I've made this point, behind closed doors and in open, we have to analyze what type of dichotomy we can create in that long-term care center to make sure there is a dichotomy. Somebody goes over here, they're going to the mental health center. Somebody's here, they're in a long-term care center. I'm all right with that thought process, but I'm also all right with the thought process of having two buildings that the people of Douglas County own, and we're going to analyze whether we can actually utilize them. Don't have any problem with that. If it comes back and it's too expensive, I'll share Commissioner Garcia's concern. We're not spending the money, we're not spending 10 million more to say, oh, we better, in order to get the appropriate renovation of the HHS building, we're going to have to spend $10 million more.
Ten seconds.
No. No. Again, over my cold, dead political body, okay? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Borgerson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do have to just make a comment that I take great offense to some comments that were made by public. No one talked about a golf course, nobody talked about a Taj Mahal, but we are talking about good, nice facility resources for those with mental illness, which shouldn't be any different than any other illness that a person may encounter. And that's one of the things that I think needs to stop, is this demeaning of those who have mental illness and those who come for help. These options do take care of those who we are responsible for, and there is a huge difference between long-term care mental health and community mental health. Those cannot be intertwined, they cannot be mixed, they are completely different. This allows us to take a look, again, to see whether or not it's feasible, and do what's right for those that we are serving with mental illness in Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments, questions?
I'm up. Louis Humans, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I think you, the board needs to build a standalone building for community mental health. It needs to be a new building, needs to be I think that Vantage Point, right on the west side, you see this property here, that's your best option for it. I think that was the original administration's choice for the community mental health, right there. This is an old building. It's so old that recently I saw a film crew in there, probably a horror film. It's, I'm serious. So that's a good place to just start a new building. I think the cost is not going to be 10 million, 17 million. I think the cost for a separate building is going to be closer to 30 million. So you don't have the funds for this. You're going to have to get different funding from the state, partnering from the state. I propose an amendment to their statute. There is hereby appropriated $20 million from the general fund for the fiscal year 2024, 2025, to the Department of Economic Development Agency 72 Program Number 611, Economic Recovery, to provide a grant to a county that includes a metropolitan city. The grant will support the completion of a holistic community health center, which will serve as a collaborative hub for the county, local community providers, and the behavioral health district, to offer shared services and capacity. That is, I think, language that describes what the community mental health facility So the, the problem is, is twofold, location and money. I think the location should be over on the west side of Corrections. If it's on Forty-Second or Worth area, so be it. But you're going to have to get additional funds, and I thought you had a senator who was going to push for this. Like, this is the reason during this time, this is the reason why you've delayed coming to a decision, a complete decision, that during this time, you're going to understand what the state is going to contribute. And that is not happening, as far as I can tell. So those are the two things that I want to speak for, is the location and the funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nicole LeClair, down the road in Bellevue. I really appreciate the talk today with the sheriff's office and the coresponders. That was a wonderful presentation on what I believe is programs that actually work, and where the money needs to be spent. I'm going to read today a letter from Tim Heller with his permission. He is working, as so many are. Tim Heller is the chairman of the State Advisory Board for Behavioral Health. Perhaps you received it. This is a letter to Governor Pillen, so from Tim Heller. "Now is not the time to cut much-needed funding for behavioral health. One in five Nebraskans suffer from mental illness. 3.4% of Nebraskans suffer from severe mental illness. Over 50,000 Nebraskans with severe mental illness. Fewer than half of them receive the treatment they need at this point. This is not equality before the law. Nebraska ranks as low as 43rd on many surveys about behavioral health. According to the Treatment Advocacy Center, Nebraska receives a grade of D for behavioral health care. This is not the good life. We can do better, but not by cutting the budget. Decreased access to behavioral health care will result in more crime, drug use, and homelessness. It will increase the strain on our hospitals, law enforcement personnel, first responders, jails, and court systems. Currently, our number-one source of behavioral health care is our jail and prison systems. We thought insane asylums were a bad idea. Is housing the mentally ill with criminals better? Since my appointment by Governor Rick, Rickett, sorry, to the State Advisory Board for Behavioral Health, I've helped to make some needed changes to DHHS policies addressing severe mental illness, especially severe and persistent mental illness. But there is more to be done. With proper behavioral health care, we could reduce the jail and prison population by as much as 40%. We just heard that this is almost 50% right now. Yet we are spending millions on a new prison, and we're getting ready to spend more. With proper, I'm jumping in there, sorry, Tim. With proper behavioral health care, we could reduce the homeless population by 40 to 50%. Yet we spend millions on welfare. We need more mental health beds, we need more mental health providers. We closed most of our mental health care hospitals in '64 to '84. We went from over 4,700 state hospital beds to 194 in '20, '23. 194 beds in a state with an estimated 50,000 people with severe mental illness. That's insane. Nebraska, honestly, it's not for everyone. In a state with a 1.9 unemployment rate, does it make more sense to provide behavioral health care that can put people to work? With good programming, like assisted outpatient therapy, we can reduce the cost and save money elsewhere in the budget. When AOT was used in Kentucky, the results were stunning. 40% decrease in arrests involving mental illness, 79% decrease in ER visits for mental illness, 86% decrease in psychiatric hospitalizations, 57% decrease in incarceration time involving mental illness, 14% decrease in detox, 40% decrease in homelessness. AOT also addresses housing issues for those with mental illness, allowing them to stay in their own homes or apartments and get the care they need. If you want to save money, implement AOT. We do not need another Robert Harkins, Joseph Jones, Zachary Beryl Hills. Don't let Uvalde, Parkland, Columbine, or Sandy Hook happen here. This letter is personal. I have a son with severe and persistent mental illness. I know the struggle, I live through it daily as an advocate, and I know many Nebraskans in the same situation. We need your help now. Now is not the time to cut the budget. Let's work together to fix our behavioral health care." I think that's a really wonderful letter. I'm so sorry Tim has to write it, that any of us have to be here.
That's time.
Is that time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go to Jacquet, sorry.
Wanted to take a few comments, and I did spend-
Several hours down there at the state penitentiary offices with the warden and some of the other people that are involved in their mental health, and I really was impressed with what they're doing in the mental health area, in their state-operated facility-
Right, yeah.
-right there with the penitentiary.
Yeah.
And I was, I didn't know they were doing as much as they're doing, but they're doing quite a bit, and I just wanted to share that. And that's what I was there for, for over two hours.
Is that in the facility?
I just wanted to state that to you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Jacquet Yarborough, 2417 Burdette Street. I've just been taking some notes, just from what I'm hearing, a little bit of back and forth, some facts, some opinions, some projections, some, a lot of back and forth, all very healthy. But I just wanted to bring the real-life perspective to what we seem to be having a very high-level administrative conversation about. And this is why I always stress that you have to have your community-based providers and people with lived experience involved in these conversations. I'm definitely always in support of renovating the current spaces. Although it may be convenient for us, it may be a better look to build something else, whatever the case. One thing, as a, I've been a caregiver for my sister for 10 years. One thing as a, I've been a caregiver for my sister for ten years. Her name is Shamaya. Shamaya has drug-induced schizophrenia and dissociative disorder and bipolar. And so what it looks like is, for those of us who don't understand why we need a nursing home and a mental health facility housed in the same place, is because of the coordination of care. As a service provider for my sister, she might commit a crime because she's been arrested. And, or she might commit a crime and be arrested because of her pronounced mental health issue. She's going to end up in Douglas County. If you take mental health medication for a prolonged period of time, you begin to have heart issues, and you begin to have brain issues, and eventually you may end up with some form of cancer, which my sister died February sixteen of grade four glioblastoma at forty-two years old with four children. I don't want you to feel sorry for me or my family. I want us to make better decisions when it comes to the population we truly serve. This is not about who is right, who is wrong. It is about the people of Douglas County who are affected by the decisions that we make in this chamber. I don't think that any of you are bad people. I think we are just terribly misinformed of how things actually happen. I think the idea at administrative level is great. The way it rolls out on the ground looks completely different from the ideas that we come up with in these administrative spaces. You have to have a nursing home attached to a mental health facility because the longer we have individuals with behavioral health issues. First of all, we have lead. We grew up eating mud that had lead in it. I am one of three children. I am the only one who, as of yet, has not displayed a severe mental health condition. I am guardian, or was, I am guardian for two of my siblings, one who has just passed away because she has been taking medication since she was nineteen years old. When people are recovering, when they are coming out of the hospital, they need a step down. They house them in a nursing home facility, which has a rehab facility. This is not a rehab facility for substance abuse. This is a rehab facility so that whatever they suffered, if they were in the hospital and they lost use of muscle, they need occupational therapy, palliative care that happens in a nursing home environment. This happens so often. I'm so surprised that this is even a conversation because if you walk into Douglas County, if you've ever had to be a caregiver, if you've had I advocate very heavily for the care provided for Douglas County because without them, I would have been on my own as a caregiver trying to figure out how to care for my sister. And so it's very, very important that we not either, that we not get rid of those services or separate those services, but that we enhance the facility as it stands. That's what I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing. I would just add a quick note, and thank you for, not necessarily to your comment, but it'll be slightly related, and thank you for sharing that, by the way. And sorry for your loss. We, we currently do have a fair amount of individuals who are duly diagnosed in our long-care facility, as Commissioner Kavanaugh well knows and talks about often, which is a very valid point and something we can take pride in, that we're taking care of. People who both have physical primary care needs, but also mental health care issues or needs as well, and are duly diagnosed and are residing in a long-term care facility. So that will continue. That will not be taken away. And the possibility even exists that if the fifth floor becomes open, that more services could be provided under the right, you know, budgetary parameters and kind of strategy behind it. So opportunities could exist in that regard if the fifth floor opens, and the main point being that that dual-diagnosis long-care patient will still be served moving forward under all of these kind of hypothetical scenarios. That's my final comment, my final round. Anything else from anybody? Otherwise, we'll move to a vote. Let's vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh abstaining. All other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move on with our committee reports, last one being Human Resources, which is just the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. There is a need for executive session, for labor negotiations. But before we go there, I just want to announce that the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will not meet next Tuesday, March nineteenth. The next scheduled meeting of the commissioners will be Tuesday, March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. With that, do I have motion second for executive session? Yes, Commissioner.
To discuss the visitor improvement fund grant cycle and procedures. That's one P M. today in room nine oh three. Thank you.
All right, Community Services Committee, one P M. Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion second for executive session. Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote. Labor negotiations.
Yes.
Right, uh, yes.
I still thought, I still think.
Alrighty.
No, I think that would hurt.
And then, and then I think we start. And I have a yes.
Alrighty.
You wanna get a sandwich? I can come down.
Uh, yeah, I gotta finish up here, but I'll be down in ten minutes probably.
I'm voting yes.
Alright.
Sorry, I dropped my stuff.
There you go.
I can see that in the desert. Oh, good, and I played in one of some kind of television show with that team just went over to him quick. And it was great, and I think it's six months, that's the only time I could play pretty good at that. Is it morning side? It was me, but I thought about you and you just were there that long and everything was, you saw that. It's great. I hope we can play this song. Yeah, let's do it. Yeah, yesterday they did play a lot of videos, I don't know, I'm not gonna play in happy days or shit unless you give them.
Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, Erika Veen adjourned, second by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes seven to zero, were adjourned at eleven fifty-four AM.